Are we ready?
Thirty seconds. Twenty. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, February eighth, meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Thank you all that are watching on KPTS and on our websites. And so with that, we will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
invocation to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. And so noted that again, Commissioner Lopez is joining us by Zoom or offline. She's getting close to being back here live. And so Commissioner Lopez is glad again that you can join us. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Ms. Nicole.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Chairman. My name is Nicole Gibbs from the Strategic Communications Department. I want to remind you again that nominations are now being accepted for the Excellence in Public Service Award. It recognizes employees from the city of Wichita, Sedgwick County, and Wichita Public Schools who exhibit the highest standard of service. The nomination process is open through 5:00 PM on February 24th. To learn more or submit a nomination, visit sedgwickcounty.org. For county good news today, I would like to take the moment to congratulate Julie Stemsim of Emergency Management, who was selected to be part of the 2023 Class of U.S. Global Leadership Coalition's Next Generation Global Leaders Network. The Next Gen Global Leaders Network holds a year-long program that engages a group of diverse bipartisan young professionals in leadership, skills training, and mentorship in support of their engagement on global development and diplomacy in their communities. I'd also like to recognize Dr. Lynn Su. She is a comcare psychiatrist who was recently recognized by the KU School of Medicine and Psychiatry in their newsletter for volunteer work teaching students. Dr. Su has volunteered for the Department of Psychiatric Behavioral Sciences since she graduated from KU residency program. She takes on medical students, she takes one per week and teaches them while seeing patients at the clinic and comcare. So we are excited to have these folks on our team. Lastly, I want to remind you that Sedgwick County offices will be closed on Monday, February 20th, in observance of President's Day. Emergency services are available by calling or texting 911. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. Appreciate you. Our congratulations to those that are well-deserved with recognition. And so that's good information to share with the public and for us. Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? Don't see any. Thank you again, Nicole.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, I believe we received one email through the, for the signup that happened, closes at 5:00 the night before. Does anybody have any comments or questions about that email? If not, motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion to receive and file, no questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And public agenda, I don't think anybody signed up for the public agenda. I don't see anybody, so we will pass on the public agenda. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of January 18th, 2023.
Commissioners, you had a chance to review the minutes of January 18th. Is there any corrections or comments? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 18th.
Second.
Motion and a second, being no questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Mary Ellen Phillips from the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papoon, County Counselor. First item under appointments is the resignation of Ms. Phillips from the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. Ms. Phillips has tenured her resignation after being on this board for 17 years. So that's a pretty significant accomplishment. But anyway, she now wants to resign to turn it over to somebody else. So we would ask that you accept the resignation.
Okay, thank you. And I don't believe Mary Ellen is here, but I want to formally and publicly thank her for her 17 years of service representing the District Number One. So with that, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Mary Ellen Phillips.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item C, resolution appointing Susan Erlinwine to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council to fill the category of natural resources conservation organizations as defined in the Food Systems Partners Groups of the Joint Ordinance Number 51-959 and the Resolution Number 156-2022.
Mr. Papoon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papoon, County Counselor. This appointment is notable from the standpoint that this is the first appointment under our new joint city ordinance resolution establishing the Food and Farm Council. Commissioner Dennis is making this appointment. Each Commissioner gets one appointment to this council. I might point out that the appointments that the county is making on this board begin on April 1 of this year and will be two-year appointments. Of the seven, the city council gets seven appointments. Each Commissioner gets one appointment, then there's two at-large appointments to this board. The appointments have to fall under certain categories, as was mentioned by the Clerk. On number three, natural resources conservation organizations as one of the categories. Other categories are rural food producers, I guess that's farmers for, another term for farmers maybe, but rural food producers, rural food retailers, health nutrition groups, small food processors, and value-added product manufacturers, workforce and business developers, and food and farm training and education programs. So just a heads up that this is the first appointment to this joint board, but you all will have other appointments and hopefully get those appointments seated by April 1. First appointment is, again, Susan Erlinwine, who we all know is from Sedgwick County, and she falls under the conservation category. So the resolution is proper form, ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it very much. As soon as we voted on this, which was a couple of months ago, Susan Erlinwine did get in touch with me and said that she would certainly like to serve as the natural resource conservation person on this board. She is the perfect fit. And so I'm very proud to nominate Susan Erlinwine to fill the position on the Food and Farm Council. I'll make that motion.
That's a good call, and I'll second that motion. Any other questions or comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Hannah Chegwooden to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee.
Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papoon, County Counselor. This is a resolution appointing Hannah Chegwooden to this board. If you remember, I believe it was last fall that we amended this resolution because there was at one point one member representing first-class cities, but once Derby became a first-class city as well, we amended the resolution to include two representative members of first-class cities. This is a board that reviews the solid waste plan each year, making, besides an annual review, make recommendations for possible changes and so forth. Resolution appointing Ms. Chegwooden is in proper form, ask that you approve the resolution. As a personal note, Hannah is my stepdaughter, so I can tell you from personal experience, she's very excited about representing the City of Derby on this board. And the City of Derby is recommending Ms. Chegwooden, ask that you approve the resolution.
Very good. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know Hannah Chegwooden yet, but I'm looking forward to getting to know her. I do support Derby and their selection for her. I'm sure they put their confidence in her. I appreciate your word this morning that she's a great appointment. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we would adopt the resolution appointing Hannah Chegwooden to the Solid Waste Management Committee.
I'll second that. Any other questions or comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And just a point of information, Commissioner Beatty had asked about all these board appointments. Mr. Papoon, you kind of referenced it, but we are in the middle of reviewing all these board appointments and a number of them. And we're seeing a few vacancies and expired terms and various things. So we're going to work on that close, hard. And I'd encourage anybody in the public that would like, or if you're interested in a board appointment, I think we have, Tom, what'd we say, how many?
I'm actually going to speak to this a little bit later in an agenda item, but we have a lot of vacancies and we're updating and refreshing that, and I appreciate you mentioning that.
Okay, so we'll hear a little more detail, but it's on the website and you can see the vacancies and look at that if you're an interested citizen that wants to help serve. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, item E, ZON 2022-0054 and CON 2022-00039. Zone change request in the county from RR Rural Residential to SF20, single-family residential for site development, conditional use request in the county to permit a community swimming pool and accessory apartments generally located on the northeast corner of North 167th Street West and West Central Street.
Okay, thank you. And before you present, Scott, I just want to remind everybody, if you've had any ex parte communications, and I think I've had a couple of emails, but I've not had any direct communication that I recall, and I'll keep an open mind on this zoning case. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you very much. I have had ex parte contact as a result of the last meeting or that I made the motion to return this to the MAPC. Subsequent to that, I did receive a copy of the covenants for this operation out there. And as we look at ex parte contacts, one of the things is if one Commissioner gets some information that the other Commissioners don't have, they are required to share it so that we all make a decision on the exact same thing. Well, I was going to make copies of all the covenants for all of the Commissioners. However, our Planning Department beat me to it. And so everyone does have a copy of those, but I did want to declare that I did have ex parte contact and I can make a decision based on what was presented today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Chairman. Actually, I didn't go and research my inbox, but I don't think I actually have, I don't think I've had any additional communications since last time we saw this case. So I, again, I'm completely on the fence. I'm looking forward to the hearing.
Okay. And then Commissioner Lopez.
I haven't had any emails or any communication otherwise as well, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. And no communication there from Commissioner Beatty. Okay. Welcome, Scott, for this new business, item three. Thank, item E, I mean.
Good morning. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. So this item is being presented today because it's returning to the Board of County Commissioners after being reconsidered by the Planning Commission. In terms of the request, the applicants in this case, there are two applicants. First is TCRS LLC, and the second is Kenneth and Allison Jack. The Jacks' property is the one at the upper northeast portion of the subject site, which is outlined in red here. The applicants are requesting a zone change from rural residential district to SF20, single-family residential district. They're also requesting a conditional use to allow for accessory apartments on each of the lots and a conditional use to allow for a community swimming pool. The applicants have indicated that they are requesting the zone change and conditional use so that they can develop a large lot residential development with 84 lots. The conditional uses will allow each lot to have an accessory apartment and would allow for a community swimming pool as part of the development. Please note that the accessory apartments would need to comply with Unified Zoning Code Supplementary Use Regulations, which are identified in the staff report. In terms of the property, the subject site is generally located at the northeast corner of 167th Street and 4th Street, otherwise known as Central. Subject site is roughly 151 and just shy of 151 and a half acres in total, and of course is located in unincorporated Sedgwick County. It is zoned rural residential and in use for agricultural land. In terms of the context, properties to the north, south, east, and west are all zoned rural residential district. Properties to the north are in agricultural use. Properties to the south and west are in agricultural use and developed with single-family, some are developed with single-family residential dwellings. Properties to the east are developed with single-family residential dwellings, as you can see on the aerial. In terms of the staff report, staff report addresses three of the four items identified by the county Commissioners when this case was sent back to the Planning Commission. The fourth item was for the Planning Commission to consider the request by the Jacks, and I will discuss that in a little bit more detail later. So of those first three, the first one was if a precedent was being set for this density of development in the unincorporated county. Planning staff did a review of previous applications within unincorporated Sedgwick County that included the development of accessory apartments. More details are available in the staff report, but based on that research, planning staff have concluded that a development of this size and scale, 84 lots in the county with the opportunity for accessory apartments on each lots, would be the first of its kind. The second question that was brought up was fire protection. Planning staff reached out to the Sedgwick County Fire District One for comment regarding the impact of fire response for development of this size and design. The development would have no fire hydrants, and Sedgwick County Fire One would be required to supply their own water. The Sedgwick County Fire District One indicated that because of the minimum one-acre lot size, providing separation between structures, responding to a fire in this development would not present any different challenges than responding to any structure fire elsewhere in the unincorporated county. And furthermore, they've also added in conversations that they do have stations within relatively close proximity. In terms of wastewater, following the commission meeting, MABCD was contacted. They prepared a written statement, which has been included in the staff report. They concluded that the proposed development would not overwhelm the onsite wastewater systems since it would be akin to adding an extra bedroom to the house. The minimum lot size for the advanced wastewater system is one acre. Therefore, expanding a system to accommodate additional capacity could be constrained, depending on how the site is arranged and developed. So this could prevent future property owner from adding an accessory apartment if they do not plan it out as part of the initial development. So just something for the folks to be aware of. And then the fourth item I will cover in terms of the Jacks' request, I'll cover that in just a moment. On October 20th, the Planning Commission considered the application and recommended approval 14-0, so it was unanimous, and one member of the public spoke in opposition to this item with concern about the size of the development in a primarily rural area. Following that, on November 7th, Citizen Advisory Board for District Three considered the application. The CAB recommended approval of the request unanimously, seven to zero. No members of the public spoke on this item. On November 18th, one of the applicants, the Jacks, expressed disapproval for the zone change and conditional use on their property. However, they did not want to withdraw their name from the application because it would cause the remaining applicants to have to withdraw theirs as well and have to wait up to a year. So instead, what the Jacks are requesting is that the zone change not be approved for their portion of the application area, which is that parcel up in the northeast corner. On December 7th, the Board of County Commissioners heard the case. There were some questions identified, and the case was sent back to the Planning Commission. On January 19th, the Planning Commission considered this application for a second time with the additional information provided by the Fire District One, the MABCD, and the Planning Department. The MAPC recommended approval of the zone change and conditional uses for the property owned by TCRS, which is the larger portion of this application site, and denial of the zone change and conditional uses for the property owned by the Jacks, again, which is in the northeast corner. The vote for that was 13-0. No members of the public spoke on this item at the Planning Commission hearing. No protests were received for this case. Therefore, the zone change can be approved with a simple majority. In terms of related cases, the plat for this property was approved by the Planning Commission on November 3rd. In terms of county commission action, it is recommended the Board of County Commissioners adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the zone change for the larger portion of the property and deny the application with the zone change and the conditional uses for the Jacks' property. Alternatives include overriding the MAPC recommendation. That would require a simple majority, three out of five votes, or denying the application, which likewise would require a simple majority or three out of five votes. And with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and photos and then stand for questions. So here's the subject site. Again, you can see the Jacks' property in the northeast corner. Here's the zoning for the area. It's predominantly rural residential, as you can see. This is from the comprehensive plan, showing Northwest Expressway is the dash line. You can also see that residential and a little bit of employment are recommended as future uses here. This is the layout that was submitted by the applicant as part of the application package. Here is the plat that was proposed. One of the changes from this graphic is that there would be, there was a full street connection that was required here in the northeast corner. This is a protest map. There were zero protests submitted for this case. Here are photos from the area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Are there any questions from the Commissioners about this at this time? And I don't see any, and because this is, oh, Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just please remind us, the first time this came before us, was there a protest petition at that time?
No, sir. There was not.
Okay. Did we have people speak in opposition last time that came before us?
No, did not. The agent for the applicant was here for that meeting, and I believe he spoke a number of times. He is also here at this meeting as well.
When this went to the MAPC the second time, did they actually conduct a public hearing?
They did. They opened it up for public comment. There was no one there to provide public comment.
Was there a notification that was sent out to people, showing them they'd have opportunity to speak?
We followed up with folks who had indicated that they had interest in the case. We did not do a full re-mailing as if it was a new application.
So the only difference between this one and the one before, it sounds like we got some answers to the concern about the wastewater and the fire district. So we have answers to questions we had.
Yes, sir.
And you said that the fire access in that one corner was changed or not?
No, that was more of the plating process, so there's been no changes as part of this application.
But it does, in fact, include a fire connection from Hickory Street into the subdivision.
The plat, as it was approved by the Planning Commission, did approve a full access street to Hickory Street from this development.
Okay. And if this is appropriate or not, but since this came before us, I guess there's been another case similar to this one that's come up now that's got some accessory apartment.
I don't know about the access as much, but more about the type of development, large lot, a fairly sizable number of lots, as well as requests for accessory apartments. That one is out east, in the eastern portion of Sedgwick County. I do not have the details with me on that application today, though, but yes, it is fairly similar.
So I remember the last time this came before us, we talked about there was a previous case, but as we dug into it, we found out they were much larger lots and much less of them. And so in my opinion, that would be a lot different than what this was. And this one, and it's high density, so this is, again, I continue to be concerned that this is a precedent that we're setting, if this is the way we're going to continue doing subdivisions. I don't know if that's a reason for me to have, you know, my concerns are legitimate or not, but I just am concerned that this is the type of development that we're going to be having from this point forward. This is changing the way we do things in Sedgwick County. So I just have that concern. Second of all, I don't know that I like the idea that the Hickory has a permanent access to the subdivision. I would like to see a fire gate there. I'm not sure that we have any authority to talk about a fire gate, but I think that the subdivision, the designers of the subdivision, you know, they've determined the best traffic flows and that type of thing. And for this to just be a connection, I don't know that I like, like the way it's been presented. I wish there was a fire gate there, and I don't know what we can do about that today, but that is my concern. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Let me address a couple of the things that Commissioner Howe addressed today. And I admit that the last time we heard this, I had a few questions. And the purpose of sending it back to the MAPC is to address those questions. So I appreciate the fact that they did address those. And let me go through the items that I was concerned about before and why the things that I've learned in the meantime make a little bit of difference, actually a great deal of difference. First of all, buy right accessory apartments concerned me. This is something that we have never done out in the county. I don't want this to serve as a precedence for the future that says that we can do this without adequate protections. Because the reason I was concerned was that we hear over and over again, hey, I bought this house, this is my life savings, it's going into it. However, I didn't know at the time that this was going to happen, and now you're hurting the value of my property. And so I was worried that having a precedence where that you could have accessory apartments and people that buy lots out there and then build a home and they don't have an accessory apartment, later on, somebody comes up and three or four start popping up, and they're going, go, hey, I didn't know about this. Well, actually, they addressed that. The covenants, I'm president of my homeowner association. I think my covenants are two pages long, okay? The covenants for this are 40 pages long. I've never seen covenants 40 pages long before. They cover everything. And so if you don't know that this is going to happen, you did not read the covenants that were provided to you. So that was the first thing that I was concerned with, and it's been addressed. The second thing that I was concerned with was fire protection. This is going to be protected by Fire District Number One. Well, I did talk to Brad Crisp afterwards, and there is a fire hydrant within a mile that we can start running our tankers back and forth. There's a pond on that site. We don't like pumping out of ponds, but we can if we have to. And there's a swimming pool going to be part of this operation, and they can pump out of that swimming pool. It might hurt the bathing for a few weeks, but it'd be a little cold after they pump all the water out, but they do have adequate fire protection. So that was the next thing that I was concerned about. The next item that I was concerned about was having this number of homes and accessory apartments, all of which could have a septic system of some type on their property, concerned me a lot. So we talked to MABCD. There is a fairly expensive, but a very effective system that they will require on each one of these lots in order to be able to take care of the wastewater. So that alleviated that concern. So that alleviated that concern. The last concern that I had was the Jax property on whether or not that it was included or not, because it was going to make a difference on, on the zoning. And that was addressed by the MAPC. So as a result, the four things that I was concerned about in the past, I am not concerned about today. And it really works well by being able to send things back to the MAPC so that those items that you're concerned about in a zoning can be addressed and that we can move one way or the other on a project. So I, I just wanted to address those because I know Commissioner Howell brought up some of those items and, and wanted to explain why that the process works. So I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. At this time, I don't see any other questions this time. It is a new business item and public hearing. Is anybody from the public want to address the commission? Okay. Agent for the applicant?
That's right. Good morning. Brian Lindaback.
Good morning.
I'm KEC Engineering, 411 North Webb Road, on behalf of owner and applicant. We are in agreement with staff comments, and I appreciate the extra time you've taken to, to look through all these concerns. I would just echo that, from the staff report, that effectively, the, the accessory apartment in, in this case is, is really an additional bedroom or additional, you know, dwelling for the overall lot. So I think from a characterization of the overall development, you have eighty-four lots. So those, it's just like having a, maybe a sixth bedroom in your, in your, in your house. It's, it's designed to be an amenity, an option for the owners as kids age or as adults age, a place that you could have your folks live with you and your property. So it's really designed as an amenity for the development. So I think it's just good to understand that, and I think some of you may have read through the covenants, and there's some restrictions as far as Airbnbs or things of that nature. That's also an important component to this, I think. And lastly, I'd just echo that this is a, a, a low-density development, in my opinion, because at, you know, at, at the overall acreage, it's roughly 1.9 dwelling units per acre. So I think in that, in that characterization, it's a, it's a low-density development. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Appreciate you coming up and saying a comment. Oh, Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Just one question. The, the lots that end up with having, lots that end up having an accessory apartment built on, I am curious, do they share a wastewater system? Do they share electrical?
Yes, it's, it's as though it's an extension of the house. So it's not as though it's a standalone unit.
Have the same address?
Yeah, yeah, everything is the same, so.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez, do you have any questions? I just want to make sure.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the public? I don't see any, so we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the bench. So any other comments? I don't think I see any, but Commissioner Dennis, senior district?
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I made my comments before. Again, one of my big concerns still is that this isn't a precedence for everything going through MAPC in the future, that we need to make sure that the protections are in place. But with that, I believe that I would, actually, I move that we, the board takes the recommended action.
I'll second that. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So generally speaking, I'm, I'm a person that likes to see property rights preserved, and I like less restrictions on property. So I'll probably go ahead and support the, the motion this morning, but I am, I'm bothered by the precedent. And, but in light of the fact that we had no opposition, there's no protests, the MAPC approved it twice with basically unanimous vote, I will go ahead and support the motion today. But I am concerned, I'll just share that I'm concerned that I think in the future that subdivisions need to have the ability to install fire gates to control traffic flow through their subdivisions. And I think that, again, had we not done the accessory apartments by right, but done it by application, it would be just as good. We don't have to do it by right. To me, to me, this is a precedent that I think that I would just caution us from going down this path because we did it once, we're going to continue to approve these all the time. I think that's the wrong message, and so I, I will reluctantly vote yes. But I do have concerns. I wanted to just share my explanation of it. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Hi.
Commissioner Dennis?
Hi.
Commissioner Beatty?
Hi.
Commissioner Howell?
Hi.
Chairman Meitzner?
Hi. Motion carries. I, I understand, before we go to the next item, that there's been a, a problem with the Facebook Live feed. So anybody that's watching the other, the other social media feeds are working fine, and I guess they're working on the Facebook Live. So, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, consideration of grant and the amount of 1,823,313 from Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, assistance to firefighters grant, AFG, for ambulances and support vehicles.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Kevin Landerman.
Good morning, Chief.
I'm here to ask you to consider the approval for the grant application for Cedric County EMS to try to acquire four ambulances and four support vehicles. I know we had a chance to either visit with you on Friday about the specifics. I did have a chance to visit with Commissioner Lopez via email. So about the specifics in the, in the grant, so with that, I would just ask you to approve the recommended action for today. And if you have any other questions, I would stand for those today.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. I know we all were briefed on this, and I appreciate the, the details and, and good luck with this. But is there any other questions or comments? I'll make a motion to approve the grant as presented.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Hi.
Commissioner Dennis?
Hi.
Commissioner Beatty?
Hi.
Commissioner Howell?
Hi.
Chairman Meitzner?
Hi.
Thank you. If I could just take, I would like to thank some of my staff that this, this grant, we got notified of this on January 20th, and the submission has to be in by Friday. So this was a very quick turnaround. So, or my deputy chiefs, Brian Nicholas and Angela Hamilton, Malachi Winters put a lot of work in on this, and then Carrie and Michelle from Finance really helped us out getting this done quickly. So I just wanted to acknowledge them and thank them for all their hard work, so.
Thank you. Thanks for recognizing. Sounds like a team effort, and thanks for the supporting departments as well. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, Discussion of American Rescue Plan Act Spending Plan.
Okay. Lindsey Poe is scheduled to be here. But you know what? Why don't we, we'll postpone Item G and bring it back. Let's go to the next item. Oh, I'm sorry. Here she comes. Lindsey, you're up.
I'm having a moment.
Yeah, that's okay. That's all right.
It takes me longer to get down here than I used to.
Okay.
Okay. So Lindsey Poe Rousseau, you're CFO. I do apologize sincerely for my tardiness. What we are talking about today is the ARPA spending plan. So this packet looks a little different than what some of you have seen in the past. The spend plan is actually on the back. So we are going to move fairly quickly through this, but I'm happy to answer any questions. The goal for today is for you all to approve the spending plan as amended, and if you have any requests on when we bring revisions back to you, to let us know that so that we can come back. So just a refresher on where we have been with our COVID-related funding. We have had a ton over the last few years, and we know that that has come from the federal government. So just to recap quickly, you will see that we had the 99.6 million that we received back in March of 2020. At the time it was awarded, we believed that it had to be spent by December 30th of 2020, and it wasn't until December 27th that we found out that that could be extended. So you all had approved spending plans, and those dollars were allocated. We have completed all of our obligations for that funding at this point. We also, through the State of Kansas's allocation, they received a similar bucket to us. They had given us 9.3 million because we had had the highest unemployment in the State of Kansas at that time. And so if you remember, all of that was allocated toward workforce development, PPE kits, and, and those types of projects, safe operating grants as well. So that CARES Act that was approved also awarded funding for other types of programs other than just support to local governments. And so that also included what's called provider relief funding for those entities that provided healthcare services. And so we were actually able to seek funding on behalf of Calm Care because of the detrimental impact that COVID had to their operations. And so you can see here that in total, they received a little more than 1.5 million that went into their fund and was significant in terms of helping us withstand those, those changes. And then, of course, we get to where we are today with the American Rescue Plan Act. And if you remember, there are literally dozens of buckets of funding that the American Rescue Plan Act distributed. Our bucket that we have focused on is what's called the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. And the State of Kansas also received funding through that. As you can see here, we received a total of 100.2 million, paid out in two tranches. Not listed here, but just so that you know, the State of Kansas, of course, received 1.6 billion that they have been working to, to spend on the same timeline that we are. Now, there is also the shuttered venue operators grant, and because the In Trust Bank Arena is an entity that the county owns but is operated by a private entity, we were able to work with them to actually receive the full allocation allowed under shuttered venue operators grant through the Small Business Administration. They received $10 million that was able to fully cover their operating losses that otherwise the county had been on the hook for, plus we were able to do some capital improvement projects that otherwise the county would have had to figure out how to pay from our reserve fund over time. And then finally, what you all received a lot of emails about recently was an allocation that we are entitled to under the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. We will receive $100,000 in direct funding from that, hopefully sometime soon. And that is not tethered to the same level of rules that we have for what we normally talk about with ARPA. That can just be spent on any traditional government service. So once we actually have those dollars, we will come to you to see if you have any thoughts on how you would prefer to allocate those funds, or if you would like us to go through some particular process. So just a reminder that ARPA was passed in March of 2021. The feds, the Treasury, put out their interim final rule on May 1st, or I'm sorry, May 10th of that year. We were supposed to give comments by July 16th, and if you remember, we all thought we'd have a final rule within like 30 days, so August, September. That final rule actually did not wind up coming out until January 6th of 2022. So, and if you remember with CARES, they were changing the rules every 12 days. We had some similar experiences early in the days of the interim final rule. It has stabilized now. We've only had four FAQ updates since the final rule came out. Now, you all have approved spending plans related to 2021, when we thought we were going to get a final rule. So you approved some urgent spending plans back in July and September of 2021, related to 2021 spending only. Then when we realized that the final rule wasn't coming, you all approved a 2022 first-quarter spending plan on December 8th of 2021. And then last year, you took actions on March 23rd, July 13th, and November 2nd. So we're not touching ARPA nearly as often as we were with prior acts. So where we stand today is that through 2021 and 2022, those plans that you had approved, we have spent or formally obligated in the system, meaning we have entered an actual contract and encumbered those funds, $38 million, just north of that. You can see on this list that a fair chunk of that was for premium pay. You all have taken very concerted efforts to try and retain staff through baseline compensation improvements. But back in 2021, we didn't have any idea of what was coming for us economically, and we were losing staff in some of our key areas. And so as an effort to try and retain the staff we had and also reward those who had actually been on the front lines from March of 2020 to March of 2021, we're able to give premium pay to some of those employees. Now, the bulk of the rest of that cost has come from public health response, which is to be expected. And so that's your expenses through the Health Department for things related to vaccines, operating clinics, those types of things, as well as for public health response, positions for EMS, emergency management, risk management related to trying to ensure that our staff have the PPE and things they need to be safe. So where we are now, then, is a proposal for a 2023 and a 2024 spending plan. Now, at a very high level, this PowerPoint shows you those dollars. But all of these, or almost all of these, are comprised of certain programs or certain projects that tie up into, to this overall reporting structure. And so those are broken out here on the back, and I'm going to hop in here so we can see that. So the total's in your PowerPoint, and what you're ultimately going to be asked to approve are these dollars here in this 2021 to 2024 total column that pick up everything that we've already spent, plus the 2023 budget and 2024 budget columns. You can also see that there are 2023 FTEs associated with each of these lines. We can get into those details. But all of those are positions that are carrying forward from prior years, so there are no new positions being added. But as you'll see as an explanation on our key changes slide that we'll get to, most of these are because fewer FTEs are being funded. So you can see under public health response, we have a much lower figure for the Health Department than had previously been there. Within emergency management, we have a position that has now been picked up. You all have authorized as a permanent position in the general fund. We have the other positions we've discussed with EMS and risk management. We have some communications dollars to continue to try and push folks to get vaccinated or be aware of their symptoms. And then we have very limited dollars for those folks who are in our custody or in our care that we have to provide testing for. Those dollars are still allocated. We do still have PPE allocations over and above just the normal PPE that we would buy. Again, we, we have just seen with flu and RSV and COVID, we have had quite a few respiratory illnesses, so this continues to provide that protection for our folks. We do continue to try and have more robust cleaning services. Because one of the areas of ARPA was that you could try and get your staffing table back to where it was, we continue to have a recruiter position within HR, as well as some advertising money to try and get the word out about positions. We do still have some funds for county staff remote work. The vast majority of that are Zoom and WebEx licenses to allow staff to continue to do remote meetings. Recovery Connect, of course, is the program that you all have authorized, and I understand that they have come and given you a briefing recently to try and connect individuals, businesses, and nonprofits in our community to resources that are out there to help them with whatever their needs may be, because there are so many buckets of funds out there, not just ARPA. And then, of course, we get to the largest area of spending, and that is court backlog and public safety. So the courthouse, Daryl Haynes, in fact, was kind enough to send me our old nameplates from the eighth floor. That construction work is underway to renovate those vacated spaces into courtrooms. So much of the cost that we actually had allocated for 2022 has pushed forward to 2023, as we wait for those courtrooms to get finished, those additional staff to get hired, and those cases to continue to be pushed through. So that's why you'll see those dollars. The DA does have a position that he's asking to modify that we have built into this plan. You'll see that the sheriff's dollars are much less than we thought they were, but that is mostly because he was not able to fill all of his positions last calendar year, so those dollars fell off. Um, and then you'll see that the courthouse remodel, uh, as we just talked about its staff meeting, there is a slight increase there, um, because we are uh paying for the costs to move HR from um the historic courthouse into the roughened building to renovate that space in the historic courthouse into space that can be used for District Court IT, which then allows the district court, as part of their court backlog needs, to use that vacated space in the main courthouse for their admin staff that are coming on board through all of this. Um, facilities, project services, did have one position, if you recall, that had been included with this ARPA spend plan um to facilitate the projects. That position is no longer included here. Um, we may see something about that through the budget process. But because that position could only work on ARPA projects, they weren't exactly sure how that would um play out. Uh, you can see our actual costs for premium pay. We have no intentions of resurrecting that program. Um, and then within ARPA management, this is another area where you can see that we have had some significant cost savings from the last time this plan was updated, uh, mostly because we're not offering many, uh, at this point, external programs. And so we don't need that same level of uh support that we had thought we may need before. So the practical effect of that then is if you look, your contingency is now at 13.9 million. Um, and I will restate the proposal that we talked about in BOCC staff meeting. Uh, we are seeing astronomical increases in construction costs. Um, we're seeing it across the board in all construction projects. And so while that, that sure seems and feels like a lot of money, uh, because we do have a couple of significant capital projects, the proposal would be to leave those funds alone. So coming back to the PowerPoint then, what we see is that we will have a 2023 ARPA budget of 45.9 million. For 2024, that's estimated at 16.2 million. However, um, we'll get to this here in a moment in the presentation. What we would like to propose is that so long as the project costs remain the same, if it's for the exact same purpose, we would like to have your permission to roll forward any unspent 2023 budget authority for these projects into 2024. Again, recognizing that most of these are capital projects, it's unlikely they're going to be completed in one calendar year. And so we want to make sure they have the flexibility to continue those. Of course, we will revisit any of the positions and see if those are still needed before we would just roll those forward. So in total, that brings us to an overall ARPA spending plan that fully allocates um every dollar but for the contingency. So that gets us to the 100.2 million. Again, we've already kind of talked about most of the key changes. Uh, the net effect, again, is that your contingency has increased. A lot of it is because there were savings in prior years, because we didn't fill positions, or because anticipated needs going forward have fluctuated. So we would also like you to authorize us to continue doing what we have been doing. We feel like we have a good process in place that has allowed us in finance to understand what's happening, which expedites our reporting process. You all get copies of those reports that we do each quarter. Um, and so making sure that we have an understanding of the eligibility um and compliance with all of the uniform guidance and all of those things is tremendously helpful to us. Of course, you also have your conflict of interest policy that pertains to ARPA funds. We don't see any reason to update that for now. It also seems to be working. Um, you all had authorized us, as long as a project was approved, for example, the Health Department. Maybe they have positions that are hired on as temporary staff that we employ, or maybe they're employees of a temporary, a temp agency, in which case they're paid as a contractual. You all have let us move budget between those categories without adhering to those $25,250,000 um thresholds. We would like to ask you to continue to allow us to that. We've already talked about the, moving the 2023 budget into 2024. And then, of course, we would continue, anytime there is a request to access the contingency, we will bring that to you, similar to what we did last November when we brought the adjustments for the courthouse uh remodel cost. That contract came in much higher. We brought it to you as a consent agenda item and made adjustments that way. So we would like to continue that process. So assuming you're okay with that, that, that part doesn't change anything. Um, so we would uh recommend that you approve the proposed spending plan. Um, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, that would be the recommended action I ask you to take. And again, my apologies for my tardiness.
It's all right. Lindsay, um, from my recollection and for ours, so um back to your budget sheet, that second column to the, in from the right, that, that was kind of the targets, first, I mean, estimates, first one that we approved.
So the, that was, what was it? The last time we presented a plan to you was in September of last year.
Right.
And so this is what happened, include that after those minor modifications in November.
Right. And so then the third column, which is the one that you're asking us to, to approve, basically, is, is the net result of some of the activity between September and now, February. And so I see that the contingency back then was estimated over about five and a half million. But because of what you described, the contingency is 13.9?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the revised, basically, your, your slide number six, which is the revised totals. And thank you, Commissioner, for letting me talk out loud here. I just want to make sure I have our, our hands around this. So you're asking, uh, or recommending that we follow slide six recommendation, and we will continue to watch if there's any uh changes within those categories or anything that new may come to you. Or actually, if some stuff, some stuff does come to us individually, and we, again, under our uh rules, we basically forward it, forward that contact to you and, and Brent.
Thank you for doing that. We appreciate it.
So I just did your presentation in about 30 seconds.
Well, maybe next time you can just do it for me.
I just know, but thanks for letting me get my hands right.
No, thank you for restating.
Also, maybe for Commissioner Beatty's uh background as well, but, okay.
Thank you.
All right, other questions coming up? Oh, yeah, Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Lindsay. Appreciate the detail. A couple of questions. Courts and sheriff, is, is that solely a county responsibility? Do they have any access to any of these state funds, since these are subdivisions of the state?
That is, that is a very interesting question. Um, technically, the operations of the district court, the judges, uh, their staff, their support staff, that is actually typically paid by the state of Kansas. Um, my understanding is that dollars were not allocated for that purpose uh and that maybe not all 105 counties and not all judicial districts had the same types of pressures that we did, where it was affecting the jail and our district attorney. And so um I think this, they made a compelling case for why that needed to be addressed in order to alleviate other pressures on the system that actually our, our responsibility.
How do we find out? 1.6 billion with the state. Would you be able to, or someone just email me a link of where we can figure out where those dollars are going?
Absolutely.
See if there's ways that we can maybe uh find some compounding impact for this community with some of the state dollars. And I'm absolutely not going to go line item and, and ask questions for each line item. Something I think that I could probably do separately from, from here, because I, I trust how you're going to allocate this budget. But I, I do have a question on um item six, on communications. Spending $190,000 in marketing and outreach related to vaccines testing. $190,000 is a lot of money.
It is.
Do we, would somebody be able to email me uh the allocation of how that's going to be spent?
Yes.
My assumption is all we do now is TV and social media advertising, and that's a pretty significant budget for just TV and social media advertising for such a county.
Well, and I can certainly defer to others in the room, or we can just get you that information by email. But I will tell you that it has been billboards, it has been radio, it has been TV, it has been social media, directed social media. Um, there have been, you know, special projects to work with others in the community to try and get to those areas of the community that need this, this type of service the most. So I do understand that it seems like a lot of money, but it has gone to a lot of different areas, and we can certainly report out on that to you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I appreciate the previous question, and I have the same concern. He said he wasn't going to go by line by line, but I, I guess I, I need to ask some questions about some of these expenditures. We're three years into this, and uh I guess I'm just surprised, in terms of testing, vaccine, and outreach, $2.2 million for next year. The vaccine or is that, has that been provided to us in the past? Now we're paying for it? Is that what that means, or?
So this is actually a lot, and, and Tom can speak to this too. We've spent a lot of time talking with the Health Department about ongoing needs. So it is not just staff to actually deliver vaccines. It's also disease investigators, because until COVID is officially over, um, we still have some responsibilities as a county to do the disease investigation for COVID-19. And there is a backlog associated with uh some of the paperwork and things that KDHE had required us to provide. And so the Health Department is still trying to work that down. Um, but then there's also some um fiscal analysts. So, so you'll see it says 30.7 FTEs, but understand it's, it's more bodies than that. This is the portion of time of various positions that is working on either COVID or ARPA management. And so the rest of the time, those positions are working on other things. This is what we thought we could, we could justify easily with um time reporting that these folks were actually working on COVID or ARPA.
You actually started my next question. So again, so at the end of 2024, the intent is to sunset these positions. 30.7 people will...
And, and so there's actually, so all this is, is the 2023 FTEs. There's about another five um headcount that will come off of that for 2024. Um, that's already anticipated. But um the Health Department has obligations that it's working on related to grant management as well and other grants that they're um getting. And so as it pertains to reporting and other things, these positions can continue to do that work, um, whether or not there will be funding to pick up those portions of positions through other grants. Or if we truly are getting rid of those positions, will be something we'll have to talk about through the 2025 budget development process that'll start a year from now.
This is going to sound harsh, but it, it just appears to me that we're, you know, three years into this, and some of this, it just, it just seems a little bit uh hard to justify. Talking about $234,000 for cleaning services for county facilities, and it says vaccine testing sites and traffic court. I don't know how that's going to be different in 2025, or how it's different than 2023. But to spend $234,000 in 2024 for that purpose, it just seems like we're, that is a lot of money um for that, uh, very, very specific use. I'm not, you know, back in 2020 and 2021, we saw them come through with all kinds of anti-disinfectant sprays and, you know, it was kind of a big deal at that time. I haven't seen that in at least a year anywhere. And so I don't know exactly what they're doing with $234,000. That's just one example. PPE for county departments, um, that might be an ongoing thing that we do out of our operations forever. But um $144,000, if, if that's an ongoing, if that's a forever expenditure, we need to see that, I think, in our operating budget rather than, you know, ARPA opportunity. But it needs to be something we consider in our, in our regular budget. And recruiting costs, $105,000 for recruiting, recruiting costs. Yeah, these are supposed to be expenditures tied to COVID specifically. How, how is recruiting costs specifically impacting, and you need to spend $105,000? I've asked a lot. Go ahead. I see you want to respond. Please do.
Well, so um I'll respond to a couple of these. So when ARPA was approved, these were the types of authorized uses we were allowed to have. And so these, this is a hidden slide, so you won't be able to see this in your handout, but I had it just in case. So um these are the authorized uses that did not change in the final rule. This is in the Act itself. Now, its interpretation has changed in the final rule. But what we will see is um this third bullet, the cost of government services. Now, they have expanded on that in the final rule to say, whatever it takes to get you back to where you were before the pandemic in terms of staffing is an allowable expense. And so that is how we were able to use ARPA to hire an additional recruitment position to go out and use LinkedIn and some of those other tools in order to try and get our uh staffing levels back to where they were. Again, similar reason for why we talked about premium pay um that had been authorized. This was a way pragmatically to try and go forward. And I will not be surprised if you see that as a permanent budget uh request ask through the 2025 budget process. But that will be a consideration for you to decide at that time.
I know the county's been criticized by some other municipalities for taking opportunity to just spend the money because we have first dibs at the money. And again, we can justify a way to spend the money we, we do, which means there's not money available for other uh things across the county that might also uh want to make a claim for some of those funds. And so I, I um, today, if we approve this, is this approving the plan for 2024?
Now, what we can do is if there are specific issues um that, that you have brought up today, we can go back to those departments and try and address those and bring back a revision. I would ask that you approve it today so that ARPA can be used for the um roughen uh move for HR and allow District Court IT to get out of um the main courthouse and into the historic courthouse. But I can commit to come back to you at any point in time with a revised plan after a deeper dive into some of these issues that you have identified.
I, I would like to have a chance to, again, I don't want to slow this down for the things that are necessary. But I do have questions about, and for example, one more, EMS logistics. I, I'm a huge champion for EMS organization. I want them to have whatever they need. But it just makes me wonder, logistics, I have no explanation. What is logistics in terms of ARPA and COVID response funding in, in three years after this COVID uh pandemic has begun? What is uh needing to spend $74,000 on that specifically? I, I don't know. So I, I feel like I need more, more information. If this is, to, to reiterate what you just said, can we approve portions of this and not the whole thing? Or you, we should, we should, we approve the whole plan and come back and amend it on some of those smaller issues if we feel like we have a need to. Is that what you're saying?
If it would be okay with you, I would ask you to apply the over, approve the overall plan, mostly because nothing is new in here. Um, so folks are continuing to operate like this today. Um, but then, if you tell me to come back in two weeks or four weeks, whenever those meetings fall, I will be happy to meet those obligations. I will have, I want to make sure to follow up on your questions in a public setting so that the public has an idea of what we're saying, but we'll also brief you between now and then um so that we can make sure we really get good answers for you.
I mean, let's, let's be clear. Also, the last $8 million in contingency at this point. I, I see right now, uh, the last slide says it's eight, and a couple of slides back that says 13.
That was a key change, was that it went up by that much.
And so just, just so I understand, what is the intent for that $8 million? Is it, do we have any discussion at this point about what we're going to do with that?
So the, so it really is 13.9. It's just that it went up 8 million from the last time you all approved this. But no, right now, there is not, but that's why I have asked if we can hold on to that. Um, because we do have the sheriff cameras that are still, we're still going to have to see the courthouse remodel project. All of those things I see as having a lot of um risk associated with increased costs beyond our control, either because of supply chain or labor issues. And so I would ask that we, at least for a few months, sit on those funds, wait for those bids to come in, and then go from there to see if there are things, other things you'd like to reallocate that to.
To reflect on what Commissioner Dennis said yesterday in our staff meeting, I don't want to see $400 million with requests for $13 million. I think we need to be very careful uh our messaging to the community, but I would like to see some of this available to things outside the, the county government. If we have some way we can get that done. But that sounds like a discussion for a staff meeting or a workshop or something, maybe in the future. Right now, I guess my concern is if there's a way we can trim a couple million dollars out of this plan uh after, after today, trim a couple million dollars out and maybe bolster that 13 to maybe 15 million. That would be uh a great way to uh, to try to be a little more conservative in our plan right now. I just, some of these numbers, to me, it just, it feels like we're, we're spending maybe excessively in some of these areas. I'd like to see we can be a little bit more conservative. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would support the motion today to approve the plan with the understanding we can come back later and do some, some tweaks.
Okay. Any bails have any questions? Commissioner Lopez, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Dennis has a question. There we go. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. Some reason my life wasn't going on. I apologize.
Sorry about that.
Anyway, um, I, I, I have some of the same concerns as Commissioner Howell has. A lot of these things, we should have probably discussed in a staff meeting, but we don't seem to have staff meetings as frequently as we used to. And uh go through uh and figure out which one of these things are really priorities for us and which one of them are nice to have. You know, there's a difference between wants and needs. And I'm not sure that everything on here is a need and some of, uh, that, that's where I'm coming from. I, I don't know that uh... I, I don't know that I can vote for your new plan today because we haven't really discussed it in detail on what's the difference between a want and a need. And so what I need to know today is if we defer this until we get a staff meeting, does that impact you or is there certain things that we could make a specific motion on to add into the budget so that we can move forward? Because we haven't been briefed on this until today. And I don't know that I can vote for it as it is. So what do you need today out of this in order for us to accomplish the mission immediately until we can have a staff meeting?
So I think the challenge would be that many of the positions at least that are listed on here are currently filled. And so if you all do not approve a plan that includes funding for those, that leaves us in a position where either we need to find alternative funding sources for those, those positions or they, they would need to just, I guess, for lack of a better word, go on furlough until a plan is approved. And so where you see those FTEs, that would be an area where I would have concern. And then likewise, the, the ARPA management, because we do have some ongoing reporting issues and things that we work with on there, we would want to have that. And then, of course, the associated with the court backlog, having the, the lease and move costs associated with getting HR, those would be, I think, the most critical ones to have continued. If there are things on here that don't have a position affiliated with it, there's prob, that's probably something we could put a pause on. Most likely, I would, I have not gone to look through that list. And so if we want to table this, I can, while you talk about the next few agenda items, I can sit and try and identify those things and we can revisit it if that would make the commission more comfortable.
So can we give you temporary authority for this plan until you come up with a staff meeting? So we can go dig deeper into it?
Well, until I come back to you in a public meeting, yes. So if you want us to come back in two weeks, we can make that happen. That may be a bit aggressive to have everybody get here for that briefing. But yes, we can have a staff meeting briefing and then come back to you in a commission meeting the next day.
Okay, well, I don't know if two weeks is too short a time. That's kind of my worry right now because next week, we're pretty well tied up going to Topeka and doing some other things. So we have to fit a staff meeting there before that we can come back to a meeting here. So if we give you temporary authority for three weeks, would that be adequate for you to get a staff meeting so we can go through these things?
I think I might need to ask you for four because I don't, one, two. Oh, no, that will work. We do have a meeting on the first. So yes.
Okay, well, let me ask the manager too, because he has to worry about the entire staff, not just you.
Sure does.
Well, I, I think, I think it's a good conversation. I, I think that if you approve the plan today, we come back in a staff setting and discuss it and satisfy your questions, then I don't know that there's any further action to B O C C needs to formally take now. If you've got questions, then I think we have to come back to this table for you to take official vote and we amend the spending plan. Which I think Lindsay has said this a couple of times. This is not, we're not etching this in bronze. It's on paper. We can come in and the commission at any time can come in and modify this plan. So I think let's, let's schedule a staff meeting for as early in March as we can get one. Have the briefing, bring staff in, get into the minutia of some of this, satisfy you or not. And then if you want to make a change, then we'd have to set that amendment over to a board meeting so you could formally take action in public to amend the plan.
So we could do a motion to approve this contingent upon a thorough review at a staff meeting and follow up at a B O C C meeting to, to amend the plan for the future? And that way you could move forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm fine with that. We'll see what the other commissioners have. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. And I appreciate Commissioner Dennis's comments as well. I'm looking at this, there are line items on the chart that it seems to me the items 13 to the bottom of the chart are the less, less concerning to me based on your comments, CFO. Is there a way if we can approve items 13 down to the bottom and then items 1 through 12, we can take up a later date?
I think the, again, the only issue I would have is, for example, the Health Department, EMS and risk management have, have people in those positions. And so if your intention is to allow us to carry forward the old plan and continue to pay for those folks with the old plan, I think that there is no, I have no hesitation with that. But my concern is that we do have people in those positions and I don't want to be in a position to either furlough them or, or if your direction is to find a new funding source for them, we can. But technically, B O C C policy requires us to come to you and get, figure out where those positions go and get your authority to do that. So to me, that seems a little messy.
Commissioner Dennis, I would be, I think, a, as you described, a potential motion, I think, would be the way to go personally.
Yep. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, we do need to move forward. I don't want to stop progress. But I would like to make a motion that we approve the spending plan on the contingency that we have a staff meeting to review it and come back to the B O C C within four weeks for an amended plan.
Okay, it's a motion and a second. Commissioner Lopez, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't know. I think that's a, a great way to go forward. So we can look at everything, but still continue to progress in, in the way we have been. So appreciate the comments that you guys have all made and in agreeance with you there.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Hi.
Commissioner Dennis?
Hi.
Commissioner Beatty?
Hi.
Commissioner Howell?
Hi.
Chairman Meitzner?
Hi.
Thank you, Lindsay, for your work on this and, and staff as well. Okay, next item, please.
Item H, First Amendment to Office Lease Agreement for the Ruffin Building downtown.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. Let me get this PowerPoint pulled up here. Okay, I am here this morning to present, excuse me, on First Amendment to our lease agreement for the Ruffin Building. We are looking at bringing human resources over to the Ruffin Building. And so we are looking at approximately a little over 7,000 square feet to bring them over. And so this is, what you see here is a floor plan. What that looks like on the left side there is the existing floor plan. So you can see it's, it's a very open floor plan. There's no offices in there currently. On the right side is the schematic design of what we would plan out for HR. And so there are approximately nine offices that we would build out. We would build out a storage room, a break room. There is an existing restroom there, so we'd build that out a little bit for them and then a small conference room for them. In the middle part there, it looks open, but that would be filled in for the cubicle space. And so I believe that they're bringing over 22 and a half employees. There is a part-time employee that they have. And then we will also have 22 parking stalls for the employees that they are bringing over.
Hey, Tanya, can I excuse you? Commissioner Dennis has a question.
Thank you. Again, this is the first time we've seen this and you're asking for us to approve it today. On your slide, it says 22 parking stalls for employees in the parking garage. Does that, taking account to all the people that are working remotely? I can go out back of this building for the ones that we're renting here. And it's a ghost town. I go up to some of the offices, it's a ghost town. Do we need 22 more parking spaces when we got half of our staff working remotely?
Well, my understanding, sir, is that some of those, that is a hybrid remote. So they are coming in to work on some days and some days they're working remotely. So I think when they come in, they're still going to need a place to park. And so I've asked for that, for them to have accommodations to be able to park in the parking garage.
But some days we have some people working and other days they're not working. And I just don't know that this is the right number. Again, you're bringing this to us without us talking about it in any kind of staff meeting. Have we done any analysis on the number of people that are working remotely? Have we done any analysis on the number of parking slots we really need? I'm concerned again that we're not having staff meetings. We're not getting information ahead of time. You presented for us to vote on today without having all the knowledge that we need to make a valid vote.
I apologize, sir. I thought we had a discussion with you on this.
I've never seen 22 parking places before. Where was that given to us?
I apologize.
That is true. You've never seen the 22 parking places, but we have had discussion about space.
I understand that. And I don't have a problem with space, but we, we have a lot of people that are working remotely. We have to make a decision at some point, are we going to bring those people back to work? Or are we going to continue working remotely? I don't know what the status is of that. I've asked that question yesterday morning privately with our HR director and the manager and still don't know what we're planning on doing for the future for remote working. If we're bringing them back, hey, I have no problem with 22 additional stalls if that's what it takes in order to serve our, our staff. But if we're not bringing them back, we don't need them.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner, but we spent about a year or plus talking about compensation and all kinds of things. And part of that was quality of work and place, meaning it's a new world in hybrid, hybrid workforce in some areas coming in three days a week, whatever. It's, I think that's part of the future and part of our, a lot of our discussion that we've had.
But if it's part of the future, then we need to plan for it today. And we need to count up how many slots we need if it is the future. Again, I don't have a problem with that. We just need to know what the plan is.
Do you want to have 22 parking spaces just three days a week? I mean, that's what we're talking about. So they need parking when they show up, from my perspective. I'm, I'm just, I'm not, I respect what you're saying, but I don't know how we can hybrid our workforce and tell them this is how we're attracting talent. And then we have to hybrid parking spots to match up. So that's, that's all.
But I'm not objecting to hybrid work. I've never objected to that. I'm objecting to the fact that we're not doing any analysis on what we need.
Okay, all right.
Well, I do think, Commissioner, when we had discussion two or three weeks ago on this, that there's a short term and a long term. The short term is what we do now. We have a couple of departments, especially Finance and HR, and then to a more of a degree, IT, that are either fully remote, which IT is pretty much fully remote. HR and Finance, I think, are in analysis mode now on what works for them. And there's many questions with remote work. Can you get the job done? Can you take care of the client, the customer, the citizen? Can you, what do you have to do to make yourself competitive in a job market where other institutions who run finance or HR functionality are allowing remote work? And people consider that and they seek that. All of those things need to be considered. And I think in the short term, we move forward. In the long term, I think that analysis is very germane. And I think that both Lindsay in Finance and Sheena in HR are currently analyzing what's working for them and what's not. I don't know that we have a definitive answer today on whether that continues into the future, expands or contracts. So I think we, I felt like we had discussed that. I, I don't know today if we have a final analysis on whether remote working is the future of the county or not. I think we need to aspire to get there way before we move into a permanent admin space. So that's the long term of this, is when we move into the new space, can we curve down, shrink the footprint slightly? If those two division directors determine that remote work is in their future for the long haul.
But I don't think you understand my question.
Okay, sorry.
My question is not whether or not we allow remote work. That's something for the future. My question is today, we're allowing it and I'm fine with that. But do we need 22 parking spaces based on the fact that all of our, we have a huge number of people that are working remotely? And we, when we moved over here, we were counting them working here.
Well, and I might have to ask Sheena to come to the podium, but the 22 spaces we're considering today are specifically for HR. And it's my understanding that Sheena, and I'll let her explain at the podium better. She is, though we call her hybrid remote, most of her people are coming in most of the time. And I want her to address that now because the 22 stalls that we're fixated on today are for HR functionality. So.
Good morning, Sheena Schmitz, Chief Human Resources Officer. My staff does work a hybrid schedule. About half my staff comes in five days a week. The other half are mandated to come in at least two to three times a week. Yeah, there's two to three days, I'm sorry, answering Lindsay's question. Are there days when they're all here? Yes, I have at least two to three days when all staff is here.
But I'm not talking about just HR. I'm talking about the staff that's in this building. Finance is not here all every day. Do, do we subtract out those slots because of finance or any other departments that's working remotely?
Is it okay if I jump in? Okay, Lindsay Purviso, CFO. So we do have, or, or will be starting up again now that illnesses have settled down. We will be having days where we do have the entire finance staff in-house for finance division meetings, for team building. There are, we're starting to get into audit season as well as budget season. And so a lot more of our staff will be here on site than we had there toward the end of the year where it was a lot of transactional posting. And you can, you can transact, process transactions just as easily sitting at your computer at home as you can here. But some of this work now does require a lot more team involvement. And so they, we have to be able to get together as a team to do that work. So I, I think that's part of the, and I totally understand the frustration. I think that's part of our dynamic that we're trying to work through now is what are our cycles? How many people do we have on any given day? And at this point, it does look like we'll have a good chunk of our staff here between accounting, budget and purchasing on the same days. Risk management is here almost every day already, although a lot of time they spend out in the public or with, I guess, doing their work in the field. So I do think there are days where we're going to start seeing a lot of finance space a lot more. So that becomes the challenge in terms of identifying parking spaces. Because what do we plan for and are there ways to fluctuate at different times of the year?
Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a couple of things. Can you please describe the fiscal impact? What's the cost of the lease, cost of remodel, please?
Sure, let me move to that slide. Okay, so this is an add-on to our lease. So this, the, the same cost applies, $16 a square foot. That includes janitorial utilities and maintenance. So it's 114, additional 114,080 annually, paid monthly is 9,506. So for 24 months, we're paying 228,160. So by timeline, we'll be a 25-month lease. So that'll be from, we think this is going to take about 90 days for them to build this out. So this is my projection that they'll be in about June 1 of 2023. And then they'll be, of course, the lease will end June 30 of 2025.
And the cost of remodeling?
Tenant improvements, we're estimating about 160,000. The landlord will improve, not exceed 60,000. So our costs will be about 100,000.
100 what?
100,000. That's our cost.
Our total cost for this, for the 19 months we're going to get to use it, would be approximately $330,000. That's lease cost and remodeling costs. About 19 months because it's, we're only in this building right now. The plan is hopefully to be out of here by the end of 2024. That gives us about 22 months after February this year, not 24.
Not, not out of here 2024, end of year 24.
How many months do we have left here?
We have this lease until June 30 of 2025.
Okay, thank you. So six more months. Okay. So roughly 25 months altogether.
Right.
Okay, so $330,000 is the cost. And who's going to use the, who's going to use the vacated space in the historic?
District Court IT.
And IT is already, so District Court IT, that's a different IT than our IT, I assume. Okay. And where are they, where are they right now?
They're in the courthouse right now.
So by them moving out of there to the historic, does that opens up a space in the courthouse somewhere?
Correct.
Okay. And when would the historic courthouse be remodeled for their use?
I, I don't know if I have an estimate, but I would guess probably it'd probably take about same amount of time, three to maybe six months. But I don't think we're going to do a lot of work on remodeling in the historic courthouse for them.
But then that space opens up inside the courthouse and that would be available to the courts. And they are, they need that space sooner than later, it sounds like. They don't want to wait until we move out of this building to get their, I mean, when we move out of the building, there's a shuffle that happens. Everybody shuffles forward, so to speak. I mean, I imagine when we get our admin building, HR is going to move with us whenever, whenever that happens.
That's correct.
So that'll, ultimately, they're going to move regardless. And so this space would open up, then the DA, IT can move at that point and the courts, courts would have access to the space they're currently using. and the courts, courts would have access to the space they're currently using. So the shuffle happens when we move out of this building to our permanent admin space, whenever that happens. So I guess my question is, is $330,000 worth it to expedite that plan for the DA, for the court system? Ultimately, the benefit is to the court system. Do they need to suspend $330,000 today to expedite that access sooner than later? Does that make sense?
I'm not tracking, sir.
The ask today is, we're going to, we're going to commit $330,000, and we're going to get to use this space for roughly 25 months at the most, probably. The goal is to be out of this building before our lease runs out. And they're going to be, they're going to, we're going to amend the lease, so this HR space is same deadline as we have the rest of our offices currently. So we have around, around 25 months, starting March of 2023 through June of 2025. Those 25 months is going to cost ARPA $330,000. And to do, the reason to do this is because the courts need that space sooner than that. They don't want to wait until we move to get their hands on that space. Is that what we're saying? Okay. Curiously, what's going to go in the DA annex? DA has their office space. What's going to go, is that 19,000 or 24,000 square feet? What's going to go in that space?
I'm trying to remember. I think it was a little over 16,000 between first and second floor.
16,000. Could they not, could DA, DA IT, could they not use that space?
They could. It, it's a matter of when they finish construction in the main tower, and then the District, District Attorney would have to move into the second and the third floor when that becomes available, when that's finished in the tower. Now, what I had mentioned yesterday was, I thought a good possibility for the annex could be pre-trial and drug court and sheriff offender registration unit. Those are both, if you, if you recall, pre-trial and drug court moved out, and then offender registration unit is in a lease. And so those are two possibilities that could go into the annex.
Okay. We also have some things that are at the Harry Street Mall currently that I think potentially would be good candidates for this space.
And we had talked about that in the past. I think the concern was, JFS is in Harry Street, and I think the concern was, we didn't want to put that community-based juvenile piece into the courthouse.
I don't want the JFS moved over there. I don't think that's the right tip. But there are some other things at the, at the mall that could move.
There is comm care, adult services at the mall. And I don't know if that, that would be considered a good program to put in the courthouse.
And we will be having discussion about the juvenile campus in the budget retreat coming up. That's a topic of discussion.
This $330,000 cost, was this reflected in that ARPA plan we just saw a minute ago? It was? Okay. Well, I somewhat agree with Commissioner Dennis. I'm not sure I'm ready to vote on this today. I, I feel like I need some time to chew on it, and my concern is, again, one other concern I have is, it says we're going to build out nine offices, a storage room, a break room, restroom, conference room. And again, it's for 25 months. I don't know if there's any way to minimize those costs, but this is temporary space. Otherwise, we have break rooms elsewhere in the building. We have restrooms in the building. We have, you know, I'm not sure we need all that stuff. Seems like it's a lot to me. Go ahead.
Sorry, Lindsay Poviso, CFO. So I had worked a little bit with the District Court on trying to understand if this is a need that's eligible for ARPA use, and so I have a little bit of additional insight. So that's why I've asked to speak. So when the District Court IT moves out of their current space on the 11th floor of the main courthouse and into the historic, that space can now be used for the three appeals court judges. That they are now, it's, it's new. They're having work out of the courthouse. So that's part of the sensitivity, the time sensitivity and the urgency. That space was going to, they were, we were going to have to rehab some space in the courthouse anyway for them. This just provides a much more easily accessible space, because it's already being used for IT, but it keeps them in the courthouse with the security that the judge requires. And so that's why we can't just move these folks into that vacated historic courthouse space. We actually need to get District Court IT out that does not require the same level of security so that we can have this space in the main courthouse for their usage. And so that's why, yes, they do not want to wait the 25 months for us to vacate this space and for HR to move out of the historic courthouse. That's why they're asking for this now.
Okay, that's my final comment. My final comment is just, I feel like we did a space needs study a number of years ago. There's been so many things changed. I think we need to just throw that one away and start over. We, our space needs study needs to be rethought from ground up. I just think, I think there's so many moving pieces right now. I have no idea what spaces are available, what spaces we should sell, maybe reconfigure where things are. There's just, there's a lot of moving pieces to this, and I feel like this is just one more piece of that very complicated discussion that I don't, I don't know about this one standing by itself, if this is the best idea today. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. I think I got most of my questions answered in this conversation. I think I was trying to find a tangible return on investment for taxpayers to say, okay, what does moving HR here, how is that realized in a tangible return on investment? And I think it is under the umbrella of what happens over at the courthouse with the courts. And all of ARPA spending, a significant portion of ARPA spending, we're in this building today in order to satisfy urgent needs for the courts. So I was trying to understand the urgency of the move, because $330,000 to Commissioner Dennis and Commissioner House Point, it's a significant amount of money for a shortened time. But it's also under the, all of this is a significant amount of money for, for a shortened amount of time. So what I'm trying to do is find the balance, is the balance between the need, the urgency of the need, but also the balance in understanding what our department heads are telling us, what the courts are telling us, what the DA is telling us of the needs and how urgent they are. So I think I got most of my, my questions answered in that. But I'm a big proponent of finding that balance between what you're telling us our department heads need in regards even with parking and things of that sort, is what is going to bring stability to these departments so we can perform good government service? And it's more than just competitive wage. It is very much about the morale of our department. But I'm just kind of curious, after the parking slots, how much is one parking space? What's that cost us? I, I didn't catch that part of it.
And I don't know if I can describe that, because I will tell you it's rolled into our square footage cost for the lease.
So it's wrapped into the lease?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, I, I think there's been a couple suggestions of what might possibly be a motion, and, but these are good conversations to flush these things out. Again, it's about finding that balance between, how do we steward this budget well and these ARPA funds? I don't want to be perceived that we're just wasting ARPA dollars. It's a big impact, dollar for dollar, for what we can accomplish for good government service and efficiency. And I don't think that prior, the prior commission has done that. I'm not, I'm not indicating that. I just, I appreciate the conversation that we're willing to dig in and flush this out to make sure we get, we get to a good end result. So I'll stand by and kind of listen to where the conversations are going on a motion, but I appreciate the dialogue.
Tanya, are you, is your presentation, has it just kind of been all over? Are you still?
No, that's okay. I just want to add one more piece. As, as we talk about transparency and you're talking about costs, I did mention that we would be paying $100,000 for the tenant improvements. I do want to include this slide. It does include the $100,000 for that tenant improvements that I just mentioned. These are additional costs to move over HR for a total of 181,095. That includes movers to move HR over, $11,000 to move the cubicle furniture over, and then $3,000 for the signage, and then the IT cost, which is $37,000. So again, that's a total of 181,000 on top of the, the lease rate. So I did want to include that, as you're making those considerations.
All right. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Let me make it clear. I think it's a good idea to move HR over here. I'm not adverse to that whatsoever. I just want to make sure that as we make these decisions, that we're looking at the whole picture rather than focusing on one department. And again, wants and needs, do we need this much? So I'll vote for this with the caveat that we do a deep dive on what we really need over here to work for the next two years, or two and a half years, however long we're going to be here. But I have no objection. As a matter of fact, I've been pushing to get HR over here, because every day I see Sheena and her staff over here, and they're driving back and forth constantly, and I think that's a bad idea. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. What I'm opposed to is not looking at the whole picture of what's happening in this building. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez, do you have anything, questions?
Thank you. Well, first, I just want to thank staff for all the work that's gone into this. I mean, this is a tremendous amount of work and understanding of, you know, our needs. But Lindsay, I appreciate you reaching out and really understanding why the urgency to get this move done now and not waiting until, you know, we do have the admin space. And I am in agreeance on getting this passed. I think it's the right direction and where to go. I can't see where Commissioner Dennis is asking for, you know, just to take a broader look at, with virtual people working from home part of the time, I mean, how many people are here in the building daily? Versus how many parking spaces do we have? If we have everybody here, you know, every day, then that's different. But, you know, something just to keep in mind going forward. So, but I am in agreeance getting this passed. I realize the urgency of it and have no further questions. Thank you.
Okay. Don't see any other questions. Great conversation and a lot, lot discussed. So with that, and I also think it's even the location, being on the ground floor of Douglas Street and with your signage, who knows, will it be easily accessible versus where, where you're at now? Tough to get to for people that are there, so who knows? A lot of discussion, and thank you, and I will make a motion that we approve the First Amendment to the office lease agreement as presented.
I second it.
It's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just reflecting on how we got here. I, one of the first comments was, we didn't really have much of a discussion before, this is before. And I agree that, I knew there was some discussion out there. I didn't know where it was until it was, until this was on the agenda. I really didn't know that this was this mature. And one of the questions I have, I continue to have right now is, what other options do we have to relocate HR out of their current space? I mean, it sounds like DA IT needs to have that space, and they're going to stay there, right? It's not temporary. DA, I'm sorry.
District Court.
District Court, excuse me. District Court IT. This is a permanent home for them, right? So that's, that's actually good, to get them a permanent space. We have a lot of unused space. I'm still thinking about Munga right now, I guess is, is open. We have no plan right now what to do with that. I know it's not timely, but the DA annex is, is a curious thing. I'm not sure exactly what we're doing with that. You know, there's also temporary office space we could probably get around, you know, downtown, wherever. This is an option. I don't know if this is a good deal or not a good deal. I don't know. But it just comes to us with, you know, very mature discussion at the point where we just need final approval. And I know that I like the process, but, you know, part of me says, just because this is ARPA money doesn't mean it's not important. It is important. This is, this money can do great things in the community or for other parts of the county government. So I don't want to be not careful. And I'm not saying we're not being careful. I just want to be, make sure the message is, we are being careful. And I'm reluctant to, to do this, but I guess I will support the motion. I don't know that I'm in love with the plan. I would, I would encourage us to maybe not make it such a nice space. It is a, is a, it's a spacious area, and these offices could be huge. I don't know what we're planning to do here, but I would like to make it sure that we're being frugal and conservative, looking at this like temporary space. If you can get by with something you don't need, if you don't need a break room, because you can use another break room in the area, or if you don't, you know, I don't know what we can do to, to reduce the costs. But I don't want, I don't want it to outfit this like it's a permanent space. This is not. This is very temporary. And so with that caution and that encouragement to be, to spend less money on this plan, and knowing that it's ARPA funded, I will reluctantly support the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Well, the motion included the presentation to approve the lease as presented, so. It's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item I, resolution to rescind resolution number 229-219 regarding the policy for recommendations for at-large board appointments.
Good morning again, Commissioner Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office. This agenda item is in reference to policy, Sedgwick County Policy 1.105. This is a policy which was created in October of 2019 and ratified by the commission on that date. And it is a policy that helps us create parameters and, and drives the process to, to have board-appointed positions onto advisory boards. Now, there's two kinds of appointments. One is a commission-level appointment, which is not pertaining to this policy. This policy only deals with when the body of the board has to make an appointment. So we were after with this policy some type of guideline to, to set that up. There's three or three items why we want to rescind the policy today. Number one, it needs some minor language cleanup in it, which is not unusual when we draft inaugural policies to come back in a few years and want to clean up some language. Number two, I'd like to have a discussion with commission, preferably in a staff meeting, where we can talk about term limiting some of these positions. We've kind of talked on and off about that before. That will be the will of the, of the, of the commission. Currently, there is, it asks for a two-term appointment, but doesn't necessarily mandate it. And so we get a lot of appointments that go on and on and on. We've had people on boards for 20-plus years. And I'd like to talk to the commission about the ramifications of that, maybe revisit that part of the policy. And then mainly, the third item is, we've had, in this policy, it calls for a public discussion of candidates and their qualifications in a public arena. And we've had two or three citizens who have complained that they didn't necessarily like that kind of discussion about them, who are volunteering for a, you know, basically a position to help the county, having their background scrutinized and some of their qualifications. So we'd like to think of another way to get that done, but maybe not embarrass anyone in a public format. So that's, that's the main reason we want to rescind. At the end of this, I'd like to redraft this policy after visiting with commission, make sure that at the end of the day, that this policy creates a very robust advisory board situation. It's easy to sign up. There's clear instruction. There's fair selection processes. We keep all positions full, and we stay on that until those positions are full. We do so in an efficient and ethical process that never embarrasses anyone. That's not the goal of this, of this policy. This commission is, has been clear that citizen input is critical to the maintenance of government. This is, this policy pertains directly to that. So we want to pull it off for today, but I promise you, we will bring back a different policy that maybe takes some of these things into consideration.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I think there has been some discussion about exactly what you're talking about, and I think this is a step in a, in a positive way, and can it get it redone? Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Lopez, do you have any?
I don't. I agree this is the right direction, so thank you.
Okay. I don't see any. I will make a motion to approve the resolution to rescind resolution number 229-2019.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Tom. Next item, please.
Item J, reported the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting on February 12, 20, I mean, February 2, 2023.
Good morning, Mr.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Department. From the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of February 2, we have two items for you this morning. Item number one is telescoping steel signposts for public works. This recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from J&amp;A Traffic Products for an initial purchase of $34,510.75, and then we'll also establish contract pricing at the rates listed for one year. with two one-year options to renew. Final item is the on-base maintenance and support for the Division of Information and Technology. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Conica Manota Business Solutions, USA Incorporated. This is in the amount of two-hundred-fifty-three-thousand-one-hundred-three dollars and fifty-four cents. This effective date starts April first of this year and will go through March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of both items.
Okay. Are there any questions for Joe on this, uh, the Board of Bids? I don't see any. Again, uh, Commissioner Lopez, do you have any questions?
I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Being none, I will make a motion to approve as presented. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion carries. Thanks, Joe. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning again, Commission. Uh, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items K through P this morning.
Okay. We have consent items K through P. Are there any questions, comments? I would like to make one comment on item L. I don't want to pull it, but, uh, I know that, uh, Shelley Duncan has been in the audience today and she's, uh, had a chance to brief us all on Project Access. It's been in our community for a number of years. And, uh, I would encourage if anybody wonders about the, the quality of the medical community, uh, for, for, uh, hospital, uh, support, doctor's support, dental support, and many others, and to the tunes of, of millions of dollars of donated time and money, uh, um, that is donated, uh, this, this Project Access is a good program for our, uh, community in whole. And, uh, and I think we all, uh, learned about it more and are in agreement. But anyway, I just wanted to point that out on, on item L. So, um, any other comments, questions? I don't see any. So I'll make a motion to approve consent items K through P as in Peter.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay. Right. Okay. We're going to, uh, we're going to, uh, recess right now and go to the, open the, uh, the, uh, Fire District meeting. So, uh, call the, uh, meeting to order for the Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Beatty?
Present.
Commissioner Howe?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
I don't see anything from the public. Anybody else here from the public want to speak on that? I don't see any. So we'll close the public agenda. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Reconsideration of Fire Meeting Minutes of February Seventh, Two Thousand Twenty Two.
And, um, Commissioners, just want to point out that, uh, we made an error. We have to, uh, previously, uh, on our agenda, it says January Eighteenth of Twenty Three. These are, is that's right, Mike?
She said February Seventh.
Excuse me. It's reconsideration of the fire meeting minutes of December Seventh, Twenty Twenty Two. Okay. And so that's a clarification of, uh, it's December Seventh of Twenty Two. Okay. Anyway, you've had a chance to review those minutes and we failed to vote on it the first time. My, my mistake on a clerical error. So this is a motion to approve these minutes as, as presented. Any other questions? I'm looking for a second.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
abstain.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item B, Fire Meeting Minutes of January Eighteenth, Two Thousand Twenty Three.
Commissioners, you've had a chance to review the minutes of January Eighteenth of Twenty Three. Um, any questions, comments? Being none, uh, Madam, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business. Item C, Consideration of Grant in the Amount of One Hundred Thirty Seven Million Eight Hundred, I mean, One Hundred Thirty Seven Thousand Eight Hundred Fifty Nine Million Dollars and Nine Cents from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for Assistance to Firefighter Grant.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug Williams, Fire Chief. I wanted to, to present the, um, the grant that we talked about on Friday at the staff meeting and the Fire District's requesting through the Assistance to Fire Grant, three of the ALS-style Life Pac-15 monitors. And uses that will be to, um, to provide more ALS care out into the Fire District communities than what we've been able to do in the past. We've never had the, um, we have one ALS Life Pac-15 currently, but this will provide more out there and it'll provide those services out to our communities faster than what's currently provided. And, and it'll also will help us in, um, on-scene rehab management of our firefighters during fire scenes. The overall cost of the project is one hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-four and ninety-three cents, and our match of that would be thirteen thousand, seven eighty-five.
Okay. Or any questions? Just clarification. I think, Clerk, you said million? I think it's a hundred thousand. Just clarification, just for the, for the record. But, uh, it's just zeros. So, um, anyway, back to the, you chief, any, anybody have any questions on this?
Chairman, can you read that email again, please? You read it quickly.
The, um, total grant was one, five, one, six, forty-four, and ninety-three cents.
Okay.
And our 10% match would be the, the thirteen, seven eighty-five, ninety.
And, Mr. Chairman, I don't make a point of order that, uh, the numbers on our, our backup material actually are very slightly incorrect. The numbers you just said are slightly different. So I'm not sure which one's correct, but, um, there is a difference.
We pulled this right off of the grant application.
Okay. Well, let's make sure we have the right number when we make the motion. The accurate number.
Okay. The way, the, the way the grant records it, it'd be the one thirty-seven, eight, five, nine, zero, three is the, um, the grant part. And our match part is thirteen, seven, eight, five, ninety.
Okay. Not does, it says, uh, on the grant number that you just quoted, one thirty-seven point, R says point oh nine. You just said point oh three.
Okay. One thirty-seven, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine, and zero, three cents.
Okay. That's the, uh,
Can't read.
I'll make the motion that, unless there's any other questions, comments? I don't see any. So I'll make the motion, uh, that we approve the number as displayed by chief for this federal grant.
I second that.
Motion and a second. I don't see other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And before we recess, uh, Fire Chief, can you, I, I had a, uh, one of the cities has appointed their, uh, this is for the committee, the Fire official name. And they, they, they've appointed their person, but they were asking me, do we have a schedule for the first meetings? Because they're just wanting the calendar. We haven't determined that yet, have we?
No. We, um, we had asked for all of the cities to have their appointments to us by the end of February.
True.
And then we expected to spend March getting them through the, um, appointment process here with the, the board. And then at that point, we'd be able to,
Okay.
I, I mean, we're proposing April, April, but that might be, that might be wishful thinking.
Did it say in the, in the memo that was, is it monthly or quarterly meetings? Or, or they said?
That council is able to, um, make that choice when they meet.
Okay, okay. All right.
They'll be able to pick their dates and times of their meeting and how often.
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you for the information. Anything else? Uh, any other questions or comments on the Fire District? Um, with not, we will adjourn the Fire District and, and go back to, uh, from recess to the Board of County Commission meeting. Um, next item, please. Madam Clerk.
Legislative Issues.
Tanya, welcome back.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole again, Assistant County Manager. Um, uh, so our lobbyists, um, uh, at the beginning of this week sent a, uh, tracking sheet. And so I forwarded that to you and to our legislative team. And so the update on that is that we are tracking twenty-eight bills at the moment and that we're keeping a watch on. And we had an update, uh, at the beginning of this week, again, with our lobbyist. And so they informed us that House Bill Twenty Twenty One, which is the Juvenile Justice Reform Bill, and House Bill Twenty Eighty-Two, which is our county funds bill, uh, those are both being worked in, uh, in committee. Um, we talked, uh, with our lobbyists and the, um, the bills, the public works, bills, um, that our county councilor's office were working on, which was the amendment, um, to Kansas Statute Sixty-Eight, Eleven Oh Six, as well as, um, Statute Sixty-Eight, Five Twenty One. So that was the public works resolution requirement. And then the public works county engineer, uh, estimate for projects. Uh, they felt that we were a little late, uh, in getting these worked on, uh, for bills. So we are going to work with, um, other public works departments in the larger counties and then also with KAC. And so we hope to, um, get some movement next year for bills. And so again, they just thought we were a little late, uh, kind of in the year to get this worked on for bills. Um, Commissioner Howe may want to talk a little bit more on this one. Senate Bill Two, which is our, uh, driver's license bill, uh, for revoked license to be eligible for restricted driving privileges. That has, uh, been referred to the Judiciary Committee. Um, so looking ahead on dates, uh, next week, again, we have, um, canceled the Commission meeting, uh, and that's to accommodate a luncheon that we'll have at, uh, in Topeka, the Capitol for, um, luncheon with South Central delegation. So I've put a hold on your calendar and I'll get you more details on that lunch, but it'll be about eleven-thirty to one that we'll have that lunch. Uh, and then February twenty-fourth is turnaround day. And so that's the last day for non-exempt bills to be considered in the, in the chamber in which they were introduced. Um, and then next Tuesday at staff meeting, we'll talk about federal platform. I've got meetings with, um, each of you this week, uh, to start conversations on what you'd like to see, uh, for our federal platform. And then I've also sent that to, um, county staff to see if they have any input. And so we hope to finalize the agenda by March. And so that's all I have for updates this morning.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya. If there's any, uh, questions? I know it's fast-moving times up there in Topeka and, uh, things change. We meet on Wednesday and by the time we meet the next Wednesday, stuff has happened. So, anyway, appreciate the Commission's attention through all this. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. Again, this is the most intense time of the legislative session. Um, there, there are bills now above the line on general orders in the House and the Senate. And, uh, the number of bills in some of these committees is just, uh, it's really hard to track. So, uh, one, one thing I just wanted, would say, if, if we could still draft up our public, our public works language, have ready to go, I think there will be opportunities for us to amend that on to other legislation. Another way to get things done, if, we, we don't need, we don't need to introduce a bill, but if you can have this amended, uh, anywhere in the process, uh, on general orders, then it goes to the other House. It becomes, uh, bill as amended. It is, is just as good as introducing a bill. So, um, I, I think it's a fairly easy piece of language. I don't think it's, uh, controversial. I don't think it's going to be hard to get that amended on. But there, there are, there are likely bills in the House or the Senate that would be, uh, moving forward, that we might be able to amend that on. So it just is a part of strategy. I think that's something we should look at. So I'd ask our staff to go ahead and develop, if you will, a, the language we would like, and then monitor for, uh, for shells or bills that are moving forward that we can amend this on to. Regarding the, the other bills, I believe that, uh, the bills you mentioned, uh, are actually being worked today, both of them. And then Senate Bill Two, the, uh, driver's license bill, um, it did get worked by Senate Transportation, Senate Transportation. It got referred over to Senate Judiciary. The plan on, uh, Chair Kelly Warren plans on making some, uh, adjustments to the bill further by, by their committee. They don't have a, a hearing scheduled just yet, as far as I understand, but they have reached out to me and, and made sure that we are aware. We have another opportunity to testify in this, in the Senate side. Of course, this is going to go very quickly because, as you said, in about two weeks is the turnaround day, which means if it hasn't passed out of the body, the, um, the body of the Senate or the House, um, it will not go any further this year. So, um, every, every bill that's going to go forward this year needs to pass one of the, the originating body, uh, no later than the twenty-fourth. So with that, um, we have a lot of opportunities to, uh, to lobby our, our ideas. One, one other thing I would just mention, I think, is something we as Commissioners ought to do and our staff needs to do as well. But if you look at the, uh, legislative, uh, update from the city of Wichita, I noticed that virtually every one of the bills that they're tracking are different bills than what we're tracking. And I don't know why that is. I've, I've not had the time to, I've not had the time to, um, to analyze exactly what bills they're tracking and why. But I think that since we are, um, basically, uh, very close government body, governmental bodies, the things that they're tracking, uh, they probably may have interest to what we're doing over here and vice versa. So we, we may want to reach out to Wichita and let them know what we're doing and, and certainly take time to figure out what they're doing and, and why the product priorities are differently, are different than ours. Um, there's not very much overlap at all. They're almost entirely different bills altogether. So that's all my comments. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Uh, again, Commissioner Lopez, do you have any questions?
I'm good on this end. Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you, the, the, for the legislative update, Tanya. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Commissioners have anything to report on the committees? I don't see any. Uh, Commissioner Lopez, do you have any?
No, not on my end. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll move on. Next item, please.
Other.
Does any Commissioners have anything to report under other? Commissioner Beatty?
Yeah, just, thank you, Chairman. Briefly, I, as we continue to work towards the county's role in mental health, substance abuse, uh, our role in the homelessness task force and, and the surge in crime in our community. I spoke to the sheriff this morning. I just want to make it a habit of making sure that the public is aware of the numbers that he's facing at the jail. So he's got twelve-hundred-and-seventy-nine inmates. He's got ninety-three murder suspects sitting in our Sedgwick County Jail right now. He's down ninety-one detention deputies and eight Commission deputies. So just want to make it a habit of making sure that we keep that data, uh, in, in top of mind for our public so they're aware of the challenges that our sheriff is facing, um, and, and the reform that he wants to accomplish within the jail. He's going to need some staffing stability to do it. But, uh, our sheriff's fighting an uphill battle. And, um, and as we see on the front page of the paper and, and in the news, every single day, violent crime is continuing to surge in this community. So I'm thankful that it's top of mind for this Commission. Uh, and as we continue to work, uh, on solutions and, and how we're going to approach this, I want to make sure that that data always stays, uh, 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 top of mind here, but is also being publicly presented. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Good comments. Um, anybody else have any comments? Commissioner Howe?
Just, uh, thank you, Chairman. Just, um, opportunities to interface with public. Out in District Five, I do have several informal meetings each, each month that I invite the public to come in and sit down, talk about county issues. I know with, with the, uh, appraisal notices going out here soon, I expect we'll see a lot of interest in that discussion. So I'll be talking about property taxes quite a bit. But I have three events coming up. Uh, the first one's on the thirteenth. That's at fifty-seven twenty-five East Kellogg. That's February the thirteenth. That is, uh, I call it bullet points over at Range Fifty Four. That's at four o'clock to, four o'clock PM to five-thirty PM. Again, it's informal. I provide refreshments to that meeting. And then the next one would be in the morning. That's on February twenty-first. That's at, uh, it's called The Grill in Mulvane. At seven AM to nine AM. That's two-twenty-two North Second Street in Mulvane. And it's on February twenty-first. And then I have one at, uh, February twenty-fourth. That's the last Friday of the month at Calvary Baptist Church in Derby at sixteen-thirty-six East Patriot Avenue. Again, that's seven AM to nine AM. So there's three opportunities for people to come out and talk about whatever they want to talk about. I, please invite you all to, to participate in these. It's a great opportunity for us to get together and, and discuss county issues. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Commissioner Lopez, do you have anything under other?
I don't. No. Thank you.
Okay. What was that background noise we just heard?
Oh, yeah, there's a little bit of baby crying right now. So, sorry about that. It's never been.
Okay. We look forward to seeing them again. Okay. We look forward to seeing them again. Thanks for bringing them by the, the office the other day. And I think we all, we all, good timing. We have a, the Chamber Luncheon is, starts in about 20 minutes. Most of us have been planning to attend, so we will be there. And if there's, being nothing else in front of the people, we will adjourn today. Thank you. Turn this puppy off.